So I'm going to call the meeting to order. And if you would join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Now I'm stuck on the. Tony and I are in these like seats that have.
I think you need to move the table.
Well, we'll work on that.
I don't want you to get stuck next.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
Bumper car is back here tonight.
We've actually removed stuff from back here. Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from August 11th and August 25th. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes, I have two, two things. I'd like to request two things about the August 11th minutes.
Okay.
One being that we, Hardscrabble 501(c)(3), we put the name of it in, which is the Village of Red Hook Hardscrabble Events Corps.
I'm sorry, say that again. Where are you? What page?
Page two, at the bottom there where it says Hardscrabble 501(c)(3) organization. I just like to use the name of it.
Ah, which is?
Village of Red Hook Hardscrabble Events Corps. A name chosen with a.
C-O-R-P, okay.
Corporation.
Corporation, but yeah. The other thing is, and yes, I rewatched to make sure, the comment in the discussion of the potential letter to the town board, the second comment of mine also stated that during Door-to-Door Income Survey Project, I was asked repeatedly what the village board, I was not asked what we would or could do about the boat club issue. I was asked what the village would be using eminent domain for. So what would the village be doing with eminent domain? So there was not a reference, it was the assumption that we also would use it to, to take things we wanted. So I was not asked about the boat club issue in that way.
Great, good clarification.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Well, since Amy had brought that up, there's, there's a line that refers to me where in the, towards the end of the paragraph where it says, ask that we request proof of public support for eminent domain from the town board. I did not actually ask that we request proof of it. I was asking in the, in the context of asking why we intended to send the letter. Was our intention to request proof of public support for eminent domain, but it was not myself a request that they provide that. I was trying to clarify why we would want to send the letter still. So that also is not entirely correct.
So do we want to wait until they get revised, just so that people feel comfortable? Is that okay, Jen?
I will consider your revisions and I will bring back another draft.
Awesome. There you go. Any other comments?
Nope. Just that I can understand how hard it is to take a long conversation like that and make it succinct and clear, so.
That is, that's the hope.
Yeah.
And any comments on August 25th? Okay. Sure. So I'll take a motion to approve the minutes for August 25th.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I actually did move public comment up. We don't have anyone on Zoom. Any public like to comment? I'll take that as a no. Okay, regular business. Oh. Yes.
You can just borrow your mic for a second. You're going to lean forward. Property taxes due to the village. $1,444,135.28 from 758 parcels. To date, as of the end of August, or the beginning of September, September 1, we have received $1,382,254.70. And penalties, we received $2,125.38 for a total of $1,384,380.80. We have yet to receive due to us from 30 parcels is $61,880.58, respectfully submitted by yours truly, the tax receiver.
Excellent. And that's just a report to the board, correct?
It is just a report to the board.
And then the next item on the agenda is just to, is related to unpaid taxes. And it's to clarify and request a date from everybody in November. And Jen, maybe you can share.
I have to get, I have to get.
Oh, sorry.
No, sorry, I'm pretty, I'm prepared. I have to get unpaid taxes to the county by a date that does not coincide with our first public meeting of the month. So I am requesting that you all set a special meeting to certify the list of unpaid taxes as of the end of October. Anything unpaid as of the end of the day, October 31st, is referred to the county for a final payment. We are made whole, the county then has to go after said delinquent taxpayers.
And just to clarify, normally our meeting in November would be November 10th, but I am going to be away. And so when we put together our entire year's dates, we made the November meeting, November 17th, which is why.
Which is just a little too late.
Yeah, so the, looking at it, the 12th or the 13th works for the timing for our receiver of taxes. And so rather than try and do that with 12 emails, we thought we'd just take tonight and say does either the 12th or the 13th. If it's the 12th, for me, it has to be before 4:30. If it's the 13th, then give me any time.
I would not be able to do the 12th before 4:30.
So how about the 13th?
I can be flexible.
Sure, so 13th at what time?
Fran?
Fran, how about the 13th? I'm, I'm looking.
We have to have a special meeting.
So 13th and 14th of November is what we're looking at now?
Just the 13th.
13th.
Just the 13th.
No.
That's the Thursday.
We have no date set, no time yet on that day.
Could it, if it's possible to be the earliest, be 5:00 PM, that would be awesome. But if four.
Mid five, I mean, five works, six works, 5:30, 6:30?
Tony's checking his.
How about you, Tony?
I'm free.
He's free.
You're free, okay. Fran?
Currently free.
Do we want it, I mean, I'm happy to do it earlier because it's, it's going to be a quick meeting. We could probably add a couple of things if we really needed to.
I have school pickup at four, so it's.
I can't get here before four.
Yeah, so it has to be five or after, yeah.
Can you do five? Or would you rather do six?
What if we split the difference for 5:30?
5:30, how about 5:30?
Sounds great to me.
Going once?
Good, 5:30, awesome.
On the 13th, right?
On the 13th.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you all.
All right. The next three items are related to the sewer Phase 2 project, which is related to expanding our sewer use area and increasing the capacity of our wastewater treatment plant. And the first item is, is really just information for you. You have a copy of a, it's called a joint, it's called a joint, hang on, let me look at it. Joint application, I think is, yes, joint application. It is a, we need to apply for a wetlands permit. And we need to apply both to DEC and to the Army Corps of Engineers because of the jurisdictional designation of the wetland into which the wastewater treatment plant, the current wastewater treatment plant discharges. And so this is an application to request that DEC and the Army Corps of Engineers review the project and determine if they would, if they are okay with a permit, a wetland permit for this project. This is effectively part one of the next thing that needs to happen as it relates to discharging into the wetland is the speedies permit. So we need to have an amended speedies permit that, to allow for additional discharge. The speedies permit process takes into account and requires the wetland permit, but it is the DEC in the speedies permit process that determines whether, whether or not the wetland can receive the quantity and quality of wetland. Well, part of that is if they issue a speedies permit, they indicate what the, what the parameters are, what the limits are for discharge. So this is me telling you that this is part of the process and the wetlands permit has been applied for. And then the second item is a full environmental assessment form. This is not our action. We took, we did a full environmental assessment form and approved a negative declaration, actually a year ago, July. And this part is for DEC. And this is a form that we filled out, actually our Delaware's environmental scientist filled out based on our already completed environmental assessment form. So this is really just giving to DEC, here's our information that we've already reviewed for them to consider as part of their action. So this is another document that you have in your packet. And then the last thing actually does require an action. There is a We Are Grant Opportunity. We are being Water Infrastructure Investment Act. Improvement.
Yeah.
Improvement, investment, they kind of go together. And the, the body of the application is in your packet. There should be a copy of.
They got a whole new.
Yeah, there's a new one in your box if you didn't go to your box this evening. There's an updated version, Amy and I went over it this morning and made just a couple more updates. Or edits, if you will. And this is the process of applying for a grant for the project. As I think we've talked about, this project at $20 million is not something that makes sense for the village to take on without grant funding. And the way to get that grant funding is to ask, and this is part of the process. So there is a resolution that we have here and.
And that is in the binder.
That is in the binder, yes. And this would be Resolution Number 34. And so I'll just read through the resolution. The Village of Red Hook has established the public benefit to the village residents of Phase 2 upgrades to the existing wastewater treatment plant and step sewer system. The project will increase wastewater treatment plant capacity and provide sewer service to 170 additional properties through an expanded collection system. The village has the opportunity to apply for grant funds from the New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, there you go, which may fund up to 25 million or 50% of net eligible project costs. Whereas the grant application requires that the applicant adopt a resolution that authorizes the undertaking of the project and the total funding appropriated, authorizes the appropriation of any local match source, and three, designates a representative of the applicant who is authorized to sign the funding agreement and any associated documents. Now therefore be it resolved, the Village of Red Hook authorizes the undertaking of the project at a total estimated project cost of 19, $19,502,800. And the Village of Red Hook authorizes the obligation of funds necessary to meet any required local match, including but not limited to other state or federal grant funding and/or state revolving loan funds. Just to clarify, we've actually already done a bond resolution for $20 million. So we've actually already, already done point two. And then number three, the mayor of the Village of Red Hook, Karen Smythe, is authorized to execute a grant agreement with the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation and any and all other contracts, documents, and instruments necessary to fulfill, and I'm going to take out "to bring about the project" because that, that to me is not what this is about. Instruments necessary to fulfill the village's obligations under the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act. And this resolution shall take effect immediately. I crossed out "to bring about the project and." Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the.
Tony has a question.
Oh, yeah, sure.
The total cost, as I understand it, is $19,502,800.
Estimated, of course.
Yeah, I mean.
Now, on the plan of finance that came with this, it indicates a $19,502,800,000 loan, New York State CWSRF loan, not a grant.
So I believe, so the project itself is going to cost 19.5 million. We are applying for a grant that, and the way this grant funding is that it can, it can fund up to 50% of the project. And the remaining amount, the, the opportunity for a loan for the remaining amount is part of the, part of the application.
It's considered the local match, so it's separate from the grant.
But it's still.
We will not have, yeah.
Tax levy at some point.
Yeah, it's actually not a tax levy, it would be a use, it would be a use fee. Those who will be hooked up to the, to the sewer would be assessed a capital fee to cover the cost.
Which is a tax.
Except it's not equally borne by everyone in the village.
Well, you probably know the legal terminology, but it's a.
Service fee.
It's a service.
Technically, as I understand it, it's a service fee, but yes, it is something that is.
Only folks attached to the system.
To that section.
Get the service.
And has it been determined on a per-house basis or, you know, what is it going to cost?
It depends on, it depends on how much, how much grant funding we get.
Also, this is estimated, so as costs for construction.
I mean, you know, the, we'll, we'll need to do an additional estimate as to what the costs really will be. And depending on the grant funding that we receive, we may choose to scale back the project, which is eminently doable. But what we want and what I understand from the idea behind applying for a grant is to go for the largest project you want to do because they'll do a percentage of the project. If you do a smaller version and decide to go bigger, they don't increase the amount they give you.
Okay, maybe I just, down below it says, applying for a $10 million grant and a $2 million grant.
So we have received a $2 million grant.
Yeah.
No, I got, I got it.
But it's non, the application is for, is for, is for EFC. So what you're looking at down here is non-EFC.
All right, but I'm still looking at the 19 million at the top.
Correct, but I'm just saying.
It's a big, it's a big project, there's no doubt.
It's a big project, I'm just saying that this is something, this is a different grant.
Oh, because, yes, we applied for that grant in July. We have already applied for that grant. We did that in July. And we won't hear about that until December, January, February, somewhere in there.
And local match.
Talking about about $12 million grant money, potentially.
So if we get the $10 million grant that we applied for in July, we already have the $2 million grant. Is $12 million. That could be, that could be considered matching. So with a, I mean, round up to 20 million, this is effectively applying for a $10 million grant. So if we get the 12 plus the 10, they're not going to give us 10, in other words. If, I, I mean, they could, but we're not likely to get the 10 that we applied for in July either. But if we get five from one and five from the other, that'd be great.
They know, more or less, how much other, a particular project gets from something. So they put limits on how much you can stack grants so that the same project doesn't get fully funded without requiring a local match. So that's why a lot of this is conditioned.
I guess I'm just wondering, is the actual net to us 7 million?
There is a scenario where it could be that.
But there's no way, at this time, there's no way for us to know.
It depends, yeah, it depends on the, on the grant.
On the grants, yeah.
Yeah. And just to give you a sense of scale, the first, Phase 1 of the sewer, we are paying off a six-point, I think in the end it was a 6.1 million dollar loan. And the number of units are 150, if I remember correctly. Correct me if I'm wrong, of EDUs, yeah. And this is bigger. And so if we have a six or $7 million piece that's left, we'd be in the same ballpark as, as to, as to what, what the first phase was. Any other questions? With that, I would take a motion to approve Resolution 34.
So moved.
Thank you, Mel Corco, second.
Fran.
Oh, Fran, sorry, thank you.
I'll do the second.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think you got five ayes. Awesome, thank you. There's a lot more to go with this project and there will be more information sessions, processes, reviews, et cetera. But this is an important part of the process, is, is seeing what kind of grant funding we can secure. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, I don't have a contract at this point, but I wanted to just bring up with you regarding garbage service for Tivoli. I believe we talked about it at our.
We did.
At our workshop, and I just wanted to let you know that I have met with the mayor of Tivoli. I have met with, with our DPW foreman. And in the, I'm in the process of finalizing numbers. And in those numbers includes, includes allocations for the payments we're making for the garbage truck, for fuel, for all the benefits. So that this is something that, it, it will truly be a benefit to, to Tivoli. But it also will not be, not be something that the Village of Red Hook is, is investing in, if you will. It is, we will be fully compensated plus for offering this service. And so I just wanted to give you a heads up because probably at the, I'm hoping that at the workshop in September, we'll have, we'll have something concrete to be looking at. Any questions about the garbage service for Tivoli? One of the things, just to clarify, one of the, a couple of the things that were, that we have indicated to Tivoli is that they would need to shift to our schedule. And so what's going to happen is on Mondays when we do garbage, or when garbage is collected in the Village of Red Hook, they will then just go over to Tivoli, collect, and then go over to UCRA. And we've also requested that they shift the way they do recycling so that they will do every other, every other week like we do. And we will, we will take it to UCRA. And we've allocated for, we generally don't pay for UCRA, for recycling unless it's contaminated. So we have allowed for a certain amount of contamination. There will be, there will be some education that will be, excuse me, be required. But we also, since we are going to charge them our costs, we are going to let Tivoli do their, their tags. So they can do their tags however they like. We are not going to manage tags, which just simplifies the process. Tony, questions? Okay. And obviously their board needs to approve, and we will need to approve the contract. But if anybody has any significant issues with, it'd be helpful to know that now. And obviously we'll deal with the specifics when we get the contract in front of us. Next item of business is the Employee Assistance Program. And that is in the back of your packet. This is a program that's actually required because, for the CDL license that we have, that one of our DPW employees has. We're, we're actually required to have an employee assistance program. And given that, we, and frankly, it's a good program to have, and it is available for all of the employees. And so our renewal is due in October. And so this is a program, it's an annual, an annual fee. And this is a program we've been doing for many years. And this year's upcoming fee is $900.
Incredibly good deal, given how much, I mean, public libraries will also use this. And the range of services available to employees is impressive for considering how little. And it doesn't change based on how many or how often of the services are used, so it's amazing.
So given that it's a contract and that it is obligating funds, I would take a motion to authorize me to sign this contract.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Amy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tony. Any questions? Comments, what have you? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, good. Okay. There's actually another item that could go under general business, but I'll bring it here regarding the Narcan vending machine.
Yeah.
So Amy, I'll let you talk about that.
So the update is that we are, one of the locations that is offered a Narcan vending machine. Since Tony wasn't here when we, I will very briefly say that this is a vending machine in physical form, but it is in fact free.
It's not in the parking lot there, right?
It's not there now, but it, yeah, okay. So the, the county will be supplying a certificate of insurance, which includes a letter of subrogation so that should the machine malfunction in some way, that someone gets hurt in using it, it limits the village's liability. I met with Jake, Karen.
Our DPW foreman.
Yeah, approved meeting, meeting with Jake. We looked at the location that Patrick had initially suggested, which is adjacent to the chamber building.
Our lieutenant.
Sorry, yeah, the police lieutenant.
Police officer.
Jake let me know that those bollards are in fact concrete posts that don't move on the back there, unless we were moving them for good and forever. His suggestion was that we turn and do the northern facade. There is currently a trails bulletin board there. But the suggestion was that we then in turn move that and potentially it will fit underneath where the actual trail sign is on the kiosk building out there. Jake said it would be no problem to connect it to the electricity and to extend the.
To connect the vending machine, right. Not the trails map.
No, not the bulletin board, no. And, excuse me. That he could extend the roofline out a little bit to give it some shelter. It is weather hardy, but a little bit more shelter. I did, I was at, in Putnam County at the county offices for a different, for a meeting and saw one that they had there. So, yeah.
Where?
It's, well, yeah, you know, the front, the first two buildings when you go to the Putnam County.
Offices.
Like building one, building two, building three. It's not like where the county executive is, it's where the social services and stuff are. Where youth services and Office of the Aging kind of stuff is.
That's probably not where you spend all your time, Tony.
It's probably not.
But I have spent a lot of time there.
So it's in the breezeway between those two buildings?
Okay, so it's over social services.
Yeah. So.
So we've been, we've been approved as a, as a site. It is, there is no monies from us. There's no obligation at all. When the supplies run low, they actually get notified automatically, and they just send more supplies to us here at Village Hall. So all we need to do is just refill the machine when it, when it becomes empty. But would like to have the board authorize or authorize the receiving of the machine.
There's one I forgot to say that I also checked. If for any reason, at some point in the future, the village decides we no longer want to host it, the county will come pick it up. If at some point the organization MATTER, it's an acronym, so all capitals, M-A-T-T-E-R, for whatever reason, no longer does this program, goes defunct, et cetera, they will again come and take it. If the machine malfunctions in some way, they will service it. So there is, I've tried to think of every possible scenario in which it might cost the village something, and got that included in our agreement with the county.
So with that, I, I guess I would like to make the motion that we, the village, accept the Narcan vending machine. And with that, I'll just need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Fran. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Tony, were you a yes, no? Oh.
I'd like to see one of these machines. I'm going to go tomorrow, I think.
I'll show you, I can show you a picture of the one in Putnam if you want.
I mean, I think the concept's great.
Here, it's that.
And how do they get into that?
So there is a keypad there, the directions are right there. You type your zip code, and then the, like, you know, A4, and then it comes out.
I still, I want to see.
Sure. No, absolutely. So you're abstaining.
Abstaining for now, and then let me, let me go see it.
You got it?
There won't be another vote on this, so you can abstain.
But that's okay.
You can go see.
It passed already, right?
It did.
Yes. Yes. Clarifying that the next meeting is the workshop on September 22nd, and the next board meeting is October 6th.
Are we going to have a public info session for the law, the other law?
So here's what I'd like to suggest, is that we do our committee reports, and then under general business, bring that up.
Okay, cool. I just thought if we were.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Great. So with that, it's now time for our treasurer's report from our treasurer, Ms. DeFilippas.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So fiscal health of the village as of August 31st is as follows. Our general fund held $179,869.69. The general fund's New York class account holds $1,305,757.21. Our water fund holds $78,334.80. And the water fund's New York class accounts holds $150,664.30. The Sarah fund balance is $43,531.97.
The payroll story account holds $110,313.
Mary Beth? Just to, just to clarify, I don't believe we have your report in our, in our.
We do.
It was in our boxes.
Oh, I didn't go to the box.
Yeah.
Apologies. No, I, that's fine.
Okay.
Never mind. Thank you. Proceed.
And the payroll story account, just note that it sort of doubled what it usually is because of the flow on the payroll. The health insurance deductible account holds $10,162.68. As for our reserve balances, the fire department's reserve is $10,595.2. The police department's reserve is $18,205.72. The USDA water reserve account is $148,133.64. And I should note that in the near future, we're, we're planning on moving those funds to a New York class account to achieve a higher rate of interest. The highway reserve account holds $607.92. The snow reserve account holds $3,495.19. The tower reserve account holds $18,892.59. The unemployment reserve holds $7,493.93. Court, the courts reserve is $3,518.57. And the office reserve is $1,037.37. As for our August expenses in the general fund, we had $221,847.23. It should be noted that twice a year, we have months where we have three payrolls full. August was one of those. So $121,000, that was for general fund payroll expenses. And the water fund, we spent $154,880.60, eight hundred, sorry, in the water fund, we spent $154,880.73. It should, we should note that 22, nearly 23,000 of that was reimbursed by the WIA grant. We also had about $47,000 USDA water reserve principal and interest payment. And water and sewer bills went out July 1, so there was a $60,000 transfer from water to sewer to account for sewer charges that came in through the water account. And our payroll account, excuse me, I missed that one. The sewer account is 49, we spent $49,297.75. Respectfully submitted. Thank you very much.
So take a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mary Beth, thank you very much.
Department report is sitting in the printer, so I will, I will make that report. I will circle, circle back to that. But I will start with the police report for the month of August. There were 320 incidents, 163 in the Village of Red Hook, 141 in the Town of Red Hook, and 16 in the Village of Tivoli. There were 100 water tower security checks. There were 67 uniform traffic tickets, 44 in the Village of Red Hook, 16 in the Town of Red Hook, and 7 in the Village of Tivoli. Parking tickets, there were 3 in the Village of Red Hook, none in the Town of Red Hook, and 1 in the Village of Tivoli. And arrests, there were 6, 3 in the Village of Red Hook, 2 in the Town of Red Hook, and 1 in the Village of Tivoli. All right. The next item is the sewer department. So starting with, so for the month of August, H2O Innovation, Operation, and Maintenance LLC has completed their first full month as water and wastewater operator. Thank you very much. We had an operational meeting on August 20th where we reviewed sewer operations. We discussed a list of equipment and supplies needed for the sewer plant. H2O did a safety audit of the plants. We were, we were waiting for the report. We discussed the various, the various reporting sites such as New York Alert, Dutchess County Drip, DMR, where we are in the process of updating to the new operator. We reviewed lab companies. I believe I shared that at the, at the workshop. The longer-term temporary surge tank has been installed on a concrete pad on site. We discussed some adjustments that have been made to optimize the pump sizes for best function. For the old plant, which is referred to as Plant 1B, a pump is going to be installed in the EQ tank to allow for better management of the flow. Now that the biology or bugs are growing, there is a need to maintain the right amount, which means sometimes the excess needs to be wasted, which is a technical term. With the added pump in the EQ tank, that will allow for wasting to occur. The backwash procedure at the sand filters is being adjusted. Currently, both filters are backwashed at the same time. If they were done separately, that would enable the plant to manage the flow better. Because what happens is the backwash goes back into the EQ tank, and so it just adds to the flow. So if the quantity is, is balanced, it, it makes it easier to manage. Also, the west side aeration tank is waiting for a valve so that the return activated sludge can function on this side. The east side is currently handling all the flow. And it is capable of handling all the flow because we are not at maximum capacity in Plant 1B. We discussed asking Rural Water if they could help with an asset management plan, which is basically a long-term capital plan for the, for the wastewater treatment plant. We are scheduled to begin this process with them in mid-November. The first test report in August was in full compliance of our speedies permit. The full second report has not yet been received. Fecal coliform, which is the only results we've received so far, is in, is in compliance for both plants. We've received no odor complaints that tied to the wastewater treatment plant in the month of August. And that means we have not received a, an odor complaint tied to the wastewater treatment plant since early May. And just to clarify, the report is one month behind, so that report is for July. And July was still under the operation of Delaware Engineering. And so 1A is the new plant, 1B is the old Red Hook Commons plant. The technical report is also in your book. It's not always easy to figure out what you're looking at. You, there are some that say 1E, or 1B, anyway. E means effluent, meaning this is what we're discharging. If it's an I, and this is in the lab, the technical lab report from York, if it's an I, that means influent. That means we tested what's coming in. So those, those numbers are higher, which is to be expected. We, with the managing the flow and the backwash and, and all of that, we're still sort of settling into what is the regular ongoing flow. But if you look at your report, the volume on average for the, for the new plant is 33,330 average per day. It is a plant with a stated capacity of 50,000 per day. And the old plant is at an average of 10,142, and that has a capacity of 25,000. So once we've had another couple months under our belts, we'll have a better sense of what the actual, actual usage is on a regular basis. There is also, there, H2O, our senior operator is Leslie Kuhn. He sent a report, and I don't, I don't, is that in here?
It's printed.
It was in an email, but.
Was it?
It looks like it says Jennifer Capel.
Oh, that was it. Thought it was, it's important things from Jen. And I'll take the time to read it, just because this is our new operator and they're coming in. Since assuming, and Village of Red Hook Town Board, we're just going to have to give him a little bit more education that we are not a town board, we are already done. Excellent. Thank you very much.
He's not alone.
Since assuming the role of lead operators at the beginning of August, we have not made any significant changes to process control. Our initial goal has been to observe how the plants operate and to better understand the dynamics of each facility. I'll come back to the water plant. Sewer plant, at the sewer plant, we have made a few targeted adjustments that have increased our ability to process water and manage surge flows in Plant 1B. So this is an actual expert in the field, talking about what I did in my own layman's language. With the support of the village team, we installed a pump that allows us to control forward flow at a set rate, currently operating at about 6 gallons per minute. This adjustment has increased available equalization EQ capacity and improved our ability to manage biomass, which are our bugs, and achieve a healthier food to mass ratio. That I have to say was a new one to me. We expect continued improvements in this area over the next 1 to 2 months. We are also pleased to report that the 1B filter functions properly in automatic mode. However, given the current sensitivity of the biology, we are choosing to maintain manual operation for now to avoid unintentional disruptions. Requests and equipment needs, several quotes and requests have been submitted that will improve plant control and operational efficiency. I ask that these items be considered a high priority for approval. At present, we are sending some tests off-site and temporarily borrowing consumable items from another location with the understanding that the village will replace them once approved. We have another operational meeting coming up where we will review that list one more time, and then I will bring it to all of you. Additional improvements, the village team also installed an additional surge tank to prevent overflows during peak usage and wet weather inflow infiltration, INI. Recent testing has shown this to be an effective temporary solution. Combined with the new EQ pumps in System 1A, this has helped stabilize operations and avoid potential emergency conditions. Next steps, with the approval of the requested equipment, we plan to move forward with a mass control program using mean cell residence time. I cannot tell you what that is. I will get a description for the next meeting. Implementing this will be an important step in maintaining long-term process stability and efficiency. And that is submitted by Leslie Kuhn. Any questions? All right. Happy, happy to go into all manner of gory detail at any time if you would like. The, the best news is that we continue to have lab tests that are in full compliance, and that's been the case since June. Other reports, the WIA water projects, we are waiting for final closeout. Closing the short term to long-term financing will take place in 2026, per EDC. And the sewer project number one, the single audit was officially submitted on August 11th, 2025. EFC sent notice of granting Carver, Carver Construction their waiver for their MWBE report on August 26, 2025. So I believe that aside from the next 30 years of paying off the loan, the project, project one is complete. Tributary wetlands, Zoe Evans forwarded me proposals from PVEDI Engineering, Architecture and Geology for a stream sediment quality investigation. I actually had, when I wrote this, I hadn't had it yet, but I will be reviewing these with PVEDI engineer Connor Tarbell on Friday, that was this past Friday. I also have a wetland study proposal from Delaware Engineering's environmental scientist. The plan would be to decide on a direction and look for grants to fund the project. Sewer project two, I issued a written response to the request to rescind the secret negative declaration. I issued that response on August 11th with the response from Delaware Engineering attached. I shared this response via email to all who had emailed me. Copies are available. After significant review, it has been determined that the secret negative declaration, there is no new information that would require it to be rescinded. We have an opportunity to submit a WIA grant application for the sewer expansion. Phase two project, this is the one that we just authorized me to sign. It's due on September 15th. And I already talked about the wetland permit and the other document. Sawkill Watershed Committee, the Sawkill Watershed Committee met on August 6. Attendees were Karen Schneller-McDonald, Sheila Buff, Henry Woods, Jen Adams, Amy Shine, and myself. There was a debrief of the July 16th presentation of the testing results. Henry discussed the results near the golf course. No pesticides or herbicides came up, perhaps due to the time of the year. The test samples were taken in early April. It was noted that Kid Lane is downstream of. It was noted that Kid Lane is downstream of the Tivoli wastewater treatment plant. What to do with the recommendations was discussed. Fiscal sponsorship was again discussed, the purpose being to establish ongoing funding. The difference between the Open Space Institute and Good Works was reviewed. Next steps were established. Karen Schneller-McDonald shared that she would be with the group until the end of the year, and the next meeting is scheduled, she is currently the chair of that committee. The next meeting is scheduled for September 24. Red Hook Library, the Red Hook Sorry.
Could you explain how the Sawkill Watershed Committee, you are there as a
I'm a liaison.
From the village, it's not a village.
I'm not a member, it's not a village committee. It is a committee that exists, and its purpose is to focus on the Sawkill, which is tributary to the Hudson Valley, to the Hudson River, sorry.
Which means that their geographical purview includes areas outside the village?
Yes. Yes. Most of their purview is outside the village.
Because you mentioned the golf course, and I just didn't
And that's in the town.
Yeah, that's why.
Yes, exactly. So I'm merely there as a liaison so that I can share this information with you. And I will say that with the issues that we had with the discharge of the wastewater treatment plant, it's actually been, for me, it's been very educational and helpful to be, to attend those meetings, to learn more from them. But yeah, it is not a village committee. Red Hook Public Library, they had their August board meeting on August 21st. Attendees were Vice President, Acting President Martha Tepepa, and Board members Leah Banatka, Gareth Davies, and Kelly French, and Executive Director Alex Geller. Absent was President Anna Gregg and Treasurer Grace Katchkin. There is an open board seat with the resignation of Sarah DeVere. The board is reviewing candidates for recommendation at this time. The Community Relations Committee has determined that there will be a meet and greet on the library porch on October 16 from 5 to 6. The committee is looking to connect with the Red Hook School District through the PTSAs. The treasurer's report stated that they are right on track versus budget. Alex shared that the summer reading program had high engagement, and Red Hook will be celebrating with an ice cream social on September 6. Alex met with Panda. They settled on a proposal of broadcasting two meetings and some cultural programs. They are supporting a village-wide scavenger hunt during the month of September using the symbol of a blue heron. Was mentioned that there were two that frequented the pond, and ironically, as I left the meeting, one flew across the pond as I headed to my pond, to my car. Mel Corca, have you seen the blue herons in the pond?
Yeah, I mean, they're around, yeah.
Okay, I just, it was ironic that it was
Well, yeah.
I mean, you used to be able to see them from the third floor whenever they
My view has become steadily obscured in the last, in the summer.
Gotcha. But blue heron was going to be used as the item that people look for in the scavenger hunt.
This is like what Rhinebeck does with Waldo. Kind of thing.
Yeah. I'm, yes, I mean, I think the idea is that there might be 12 locations and you get your list. And I believe you need to have a library card to participate, which is free to get, so. The podcast studio will launch in September. A reservation system is being finalized, and they are planning to pave the parking lot in September. The building department is working on that project with them. For more information, you can find their board packet on their website. Their next board meeting is Thursday, September 18th at 6:30 at the library. Public Spaces, which has now incorporated the Abraham's Park Task Force. The Public Spaces Committee met on Monday, August 18th at 7:00 PM in Village Hall, and there are meeting notes associated with that. The Climate Smart Community Task Force, the task force met on Thursday, August 7th at 4:00 PM in Village Hall. Attendees were Betsy Brower, Alex Geller, Kat Viega, and myself. We discussed the various projects that had been started and set up next steps. Alex was going to track down the county's hazard mitigation plan. Kat was going to review other Climate Smart webpages and begin developing recommendations for the village. Karen is to invite Scott Kleinberg, our Dutchess Cornell Cooperative Extension representative, to our next meeting. Next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September 25th at 6:00 PM. And that is that. And then I just have a little bit of a water report because we set an operations meeting when Amy couldn't be there. And, well, yes, it would have helped if I had told you. So, H2O Innovation, Operation and Maintenance LLC has completed their first full month as our water operator. We had an operational meeting on August 20th where we reviewed water operations. We discussed the transfer of H2O for the water project, for the water reports. H2O will be confirming with the Dutchess County Department of Health what information they would like to have in their monthly water reports. There have been some low chlorine residuals at certain endpoints in our water system. We discussed the possibility of adding automatic flushing to the hydrants in those locations, more to come on that. Rich from, and I just don't have his last name, is it Rich Winter? Rich Winter. From Rural Water came to the village to aid in finding possible leaks in the system. He is due to return to confirm certain locations. And just to circle back to Rural Water, this is a USDA program that is, well, it's funded by the federal government, and it is not something that we pay directly for. The whole point is to support rural water and sewer systems with their expertise, et cetera. So we are very grateful to, for the existence of Rural Water. If you ever have the occasion to say, put in a good word, please do, we benefit significantly from Rural Water. We reviewed the sampling plan, which we have, but not in a clear written form. H2O will be aiding in the development of this formal plan. At the water treatment plant, a check valve is scheduled to be installed. There are check valves at each of the wells, but there is not one in the plant itself. All the parts are here, the work should be completed in September. And then I'll read Les Kuhn's portion about the water plant. "At the water plant, we implemented a more representative sampling method by collecting from a potable water source. During our review, we also discovered that the distribution flow out of the plant was not being fully monitored. Working with the village team, we determined that an open valve was diverting a significant portion of the flow away from the meter. In a joint effort, we closed distribution valve number two, which increased flow through the meter from approximately 84 gallons per minute to 164 gallons per minute. This improvement will allow us to accurately track usage across the village and better identify potential leaks before they surface." And just to clarify, the meter reading that we had been using was an inflow meter. It was water coming into the water plant from the wells. From there, it goes into the water tanks, and then from the water tanks, it goes back out into the system. And, and so, H2O switched the read to the meter at the distribution point, not at the inflow point, but because of this open valve, it wasn't capturing all of the distribution. You will see that in the water report, it is significantly lower on the usage for the month, and this is what explains that change. And one other thing about water. If you've been on Route 9, basically just out in front of the info booth here, you may have noticed there's some water there. There is, it is very likely that it is a water main leak. And so, Wednesday morning, Rural Water is coming back to attempt to isolate exactly where the leak is. And Wednesday night, overnight, they will probably be doing an emergency repair of that, of that water main. Which is, it is a disappointment that we have this leak. However, rather, and also a disappointment that it's under Route 9. However, rather have it now than in the middle of February, in the middle of the four corners. So, that, but this is something that's done overnight to limit the impact to people. And I'm not sure, I didn't, I don't know if you know, Jen, how isolated that section can be, so I don't know how many people will be affected by, the water will be shut off for a period of time.
That's not great. Can I ask a question about the meter that used to be read was before it got to the plant? Or before it got to the tank?
Before it got to the tank. It's basically as it came from the wells into the plant.
Yeah.
And then the water would get treated, it goes out to the tanks, it comes back in to be pumped out into the system.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted, I didn't understand. Can I ask another question? Are you, sorry, are you still going?
I am actually done. I'm not done. Oh, fire company, yes.
I'll wait until
Because I have, I have through August. Receive today. There's one for you, Jen. So, I'll just combine July and August. And so, for, in village only, combined July and August, there were 35 calls. And of those, in the 300s, which are mostly EMS types, there were 18. Alarms, there were six. Actual fires, there were two. Hazards, there was one. The 500s are assist invalid service call, person in distress. And of those, there were seven. The 600s are good intent call, hazmat release investigation, smoke scare kind of thing. There were, there was one. And then, something weather-related, and there was, there was none. Well, yes, I was gonna say, September, we'll have a little different scenario. Outside the village, for July and August, it was 126 calls. Of those, the 300 type CMS was 75, thank you very much. Alarms were 32. Fires, there were three. Hazards, there were two. The alarms, the 500s, there were nine. The 600s, there were five, and there were none of the weathers. For those with your little chart here, if you just turn it over, that has the sort of summary of what these codes, what these codes are. And just interesting to note that through August, one of the things that I wanted to track was how are we doing in terms of percentage of calls? And so the village is at 25% of the total calls. So, yes, thank you for
And how do we pay that? I mean, we pay it half with the town, or do they?
So
I know they pay the benefits fully.
There are a variety of, there are a variety of things that we pay for related to the fire company. There's workers' compensation, there's the LoSAP administration cost, there is cancer insurance, all of those items. And also, there's the investment management fee for the LoSAP funds. That's all, the town pays 75% of that. So we send them a bill, and they send it, and they send us a check. What's changed is the actual LoSAP contribution based on the number of volunteer firefighters who have hit the service number. The town is actually picking up 100% of that cost.
So that chunk that we just gave the fire department that we signed off on, that is
That is our, no.
No, that's, I thought that was a contract.
The chunk that we just gave, that's the contract that we had with them.
Yeah.
And that is our contracted amount that we support their operations. So that is, that is a separate item.
And do we know if that, is that 50/50 with the town?
It is not 50/50, the town, it's actually listed in their budget, which is on their website. They are, I want to say, 350, 380? I don't think it's quite 75/25, but they do, they do support with more than we do.
Thank you.
You got it. Any other?
I just said the, it says see meeting notes. Are there meeting notes? Oh, so I just missed them.
Where, where are, because I
I didn't see any either.
They are there, we have received them. Reports, Mayor?
They're definitely linked.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure, they might not have made it to the packet, or, hang on. Let's do one last look. No, they don't appear to have made it. Yeah, there's a link on the agenda on the website.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to share if you had them, that's all.
Yes? Sure. No, you can do it now. Go, why don't you, go ahead and
Hi, Jen. My mayor said the head is clearing high, actually
Okay.
My odd thing about people with the neighbors of clearing and climbing is actually that my physics class the only funds that go in and out of there are the ones we pay for a year.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay. So with that, my reports are done. And on to the deputy mayor, Ms. Caravel.
Okay. You did a lot of things in the past month. Red Hook Together meets every first Thursday of the month. Red Hook Together met on Thursday, September 4th at 12:00 PM at the Red Hook VFW. The group was introduced to the new Bard CCE facilitator, Jackie Cook. Group shared updates such as historic Red Hook is working on an interpretive plan this year, which is like their version of a plan that their institution is going to, what they're gonna focus on. Rebuilding Together, Hudson Valley has funding to do home repairs for qualifying homeowners in Upper Dutchess. There's a deadline at the end of September, so please contact rthudsonvalley.org for more information if you think you might qualify. The community center is selling tickets for its annual fundraiser gala. The VFW has quite a few community events such as trunk-or-treat Halloween, a Christmas giveaway, and two student essay contests coming up. The Red Hook Central Schools announced progress on their capital improvement projects. Jackie will be working on a digital survey to plan out upcoming topics of focus for this year's meetings. If there are any topics that you feel these sessions should address on behalf of the village and/or our constituents, feel free to email me directly, mcarabel@redhookvillage.gov, so that I can propose them. The Town of Red Hook Comprehensive Plan, the town committee meets monthly from 7:30 PM to 9:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday at Town Hall. The Town of Red Hook Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee met on Tuesday, August 26. In attendance were the committee members and committee chair, Julia Solomon. Also present were the consultants Eric Pearson from Patterns for Progress and Tiffany Zuzila, who is the Deputy Director for the Land Use Law Center at Elizabeth Howe School of Law at Pace University. The August meeting was focused on the upcoming community outreach. The town will be at Hardscrabble Day engaging with the public, as well as promoting the upcoming Comprehensive Plan Public Workshop, which will be on Tuesday, October 21st, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the high school cafeteria. The public is encouraged to preregister and attend to participate in this process, which seeks to determine what issues should be addressed in the plan. Consultants from both Patterns for Progress and the Pace Land Use Law Center will help facilitate breakout group sessions with the community members. And I'm sharing that so that everyone can attend if they, you know, if they have the ability. Village and zoning review, there have been no meetings held since my last report. In the meantime, edits from previous discussions have been incorporated into the working draft law, and the mayor and I are hoping to schedule an information discussion session to share the latest version of the draft law. The goal of the information session will be to explain the law's intent and the ways in which the zoning changes attempt to do that. If you are interested in these proposed changes, please attend the session. This will be one of the final informal conversations before we move into the formal public hearing format. And then I also included the link, it's in the March 13 special workshop agenda. That's the one before the latest draft, but that hasn't been finalized for, to be shared.
Yeah, and I know you wanted to talk about actually scheduling a meeting, and we hope to do that in September, and we just, we'll just need our planning consultant to make sure that she's available for the, for the meeting.
Do you want to try, I just want to make sure that everyone can attend if they, that, we'll just coordinate that.
So I think probably if we can get a couple of dates from our planning consultant, and then we can share those with everybody, and
Great.
And then folks can say yea or nay.
And of course, people can
The goal would be by the end of September, we have the meeting.
And the board can also, like, board members can review it, and we can discuss it in other meetings. This is more for the public to kind of have, yeah. And the opportunity to ask us questions, have a dialogue. Okay. So, the zoning and planning report from the building department. Building permits issued, five. Certificates of occupancy, two. Certificates of compliance, 27. Municipal searches, two. There were zero orders to remedy, stop-work orders, do-not-occupy notices, and court appearances during the month of August. There was one complaint at 25 Fisk Street for goats and traffic and use. There was one fire inspection at CVS. And at the August 14th, 2025, Planning Board meeting, there was a site plan and public hearing for St. John Street tabled to September 11th, 2025, and a site plan for 7481 South Broadway was approved. Okay, and then there was no August meeting due to no agenda for the zoning board of appeals. And then the total amount of funds collected for the building department fees and applications for the month of August was $1,550, $550 and zero cents. Apologies for stumbling there. And that's it for me.
Wonderful. Okay, next up is trustee Uku. You may.
Is there a plan to change the zoning in some respect?
Yes.
I'll forward you the, and actually, maybe I can, it's kind of long. But so, yes, we have done a, we did a planning review for the northeast quadrant of the Village. And then we have followed up with proposed zoning changes for that area. So I'll send you those documents so that you have those to take a look at. And we're in the process of reviewing that. We're making some edits. And once those edits are complete, then the idea is to have another. We had a public information session in March. And so the plan is to have another one in late September. And then we would proceed with the formal process to review, have a public hearing, and update that.
What's the impetus for the zoning changes?
So there are really two. One is the Cookingham parcel. It's a 12-acre parcel, and the proposal is to do affordable housing. And so we wanted to, the zoning that we had in place was for housing for our 10,000. And it wasn't, it didn't really apply, it wasn't ideal for that project. But we also looked at that area, and a lot of it's in the general business district that was somewhat restrictive for some infill, particularly behind Route 9. And so it was a great opportunity to look at that whole area to encourage the kind of development that we would like to see in the Village. That area of the Village has a surprising amount of opportunity for infill that would not, that is in spaces that you don't really think about.
What do you mean infill?
New buildings. So, for example, if you know where Salvatore's is, or the auction house, there's actually a whole area back there that's empty.
The woods?
Before the woods. There's actually, it's a big parking lot. It's a.
Not really finished.
And it could be, it could be a lot of things, but it, right now, it would have to have retail on the ground floor. And the owner of that parcel has said, retail probably wouldn't succeed there, and he's probably not wrong. So by adjusting our zoning so that it becomes mixed use there, it makes it more flexible and provides an opportunity for, to encourage development back there.
Has it been determined what environmental impacts development back there would have, including traffic?
No, we're not at that point yet. We have, because that's part of the formal process. What we wanted to do was to really look at the broader plan of kind of what's a vision for this area? And why are we doing this? Why do we need to make zoning change? And then look at the actual zoning change. And then go to the formal process where we would do the seeker evaluation and the public hearing, et cetera.
So there have been no public hearings yet?
There have not been any formal public hearings, correct.
We did have an information session where we discussed it, and we took a lot of the public input, and that was incorporated into the latest draft. But, and we're going to do that again. But the actual, the actual public hearing, we would need the finalized version of the law, which we have not created yet. But there is the draft online in the minutes, which I referenced in my report.
And if you'd like, I can get you a printed copy if you'd prefer.
It's on the website as well. If people were to search for Gateway North on the website, then that comes up.
Okay, nope, good questions. Okay, Fran.
Yes, so my reports, these are technically for July and August. And I would like to say a double thanks to my Village colleagues and constituents for your patience with me as I dealt with the death of my sister. It's been a very difficult time for me, but also I have been grateful for the opportunity to work on Village matters. It's been a good distraction. I hope I have been helpful in this way. I think my sister would have been proud of me, so I hope you are too. My reports are for the DPW, and I will actually, you can take my DPW report as kind of a cover letter, and I will cover the materials management, which you have in the spreadsheet. I also have news on the compost, AKA food waste, our food waste program, for which we received a grant from Duchess County. I'll start just with the materials management. On the spreadsheet is, as usual, our tags, our revenue from tags sold for the month of August is $2,284. And our garbage, so we have costs for the month at $893.70. Our total cost, including our Welsh Royal Dumpster and a little contaminated recycling, our costs come to $1,175.13. These costs since June also reflect the Tivoli Garbage Service, which we began providing on the 24th of June, 2025. All the numbers are there, the tonnage and the rest for people who like exciting numbers, they are right there. Okay. And the only thing I wanted to note in the highway department is that leaf pickup will begin soon. Otherwise, everything is as usual. Residents are reminded to avoid creating long-term piles. Try and place out your piles, either of brush or lawn clippings. Just prior to pickup week, your piles should be limited to six by six by six feet. Brush and leaf piles should never cover water or sewer shut-offs or on top of fiber optic ground vaults. Also, bulk item tags for disposing of trash and recycle, of trash, they're available at the clerk's office for purchase. Covering our scrap metal, yeah.
Fran, before you go there, just a little update. Because of the water emergency with the water main, it may take a little longer to pick up all of the brush this week, because this is brush pickup week. So if anyone gets contacted, they're aware it's coming. But with the water emergency, that takes precedence.
He did. He did start early.
He started early to get ahead, and then he.
I put my stuff out, and I'm like, now it's going to wait a month, and I'm going to feel like a bad person. I know, he's great. I just like, I felt like I was going to be going against this wonderful list.
You can't get ahead of it. It doesn't work.
Subject to local conditions.
Exactly. And then, just noting on leaf pickup, it's not until a bunch fall. I mean, there'll need to be a few.
This is just, you know, advising.
Likely to be not till October, though. Depends on the leaves.
I mean, I guess soon.
Yeah, my walnut leaves are.
Mine are coming down, so this is top of mind.
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, okay. So for October, I'll send that advisory again. Okay, so scrap metal income. Revenue received since our last report in the month of August. Revenue received in the month of August is $456. Total revenue for this fiscal year, from June 2025 to next May 2026, is $1,851. Since the program's inception in September 2007, donations have yielded a total of $57,368.24. It just always blows my mind. That's quite a lot of money for scrap metal. But proceeds from the program goes towards the purchase of tools and equipment from the public works department. So please contact the Village Clerk if you have, if you're a business or resident interested in donating metal. And the pickup is free of charge. Let's see now. Okay, on to compost. More happy, oh, no, I have to give Jake his flowers. This is just my little form of appreciation at the end, bringing it back for this month. Jake was very, very helpful, as always, in guiding the Village Green Committee through the process of setting up a planting day. Very extreme, it's extremely helpful to have his input documented for future members and liaisons. So, on to compost. I will come back to, or maybe, I will come back to Village Green at the very end. But the, we're very excited to report that the compost grant is, or the compost program is moving rapidly. We have currently, our shed and bins are installed in the municipal parking lot. And we, in front of you is a report that I submitted to Duchess County, who is the provider of this grant. We're required, as a village, to submit quarterly reports. And so I have submitted the second quarter, which basically gives some background as to where we had a personnel change within the administration, but now we're back on track. And so this is just updating the county as to what we've done. What we've done, we've installed the shed and secured the shed, engaged the residents. Currently, we're in a soft launch. Anyone who has signed up via the website or previous tabling events with Climate Smart has received an email inviting them to begin depositing their food scraps in the shed. And so, very happy to report that. My hope, currently, we are waiting as the grant allowed us to provide complimentary compost countertop pails to residents who requested them. And so, very happy to report that we have those on order. The mayor has confirmed and approved us to go ahead with those. My hope is to have them for distribution at tabling at Hardscrabble Day. We'll see if they arrive. They are meant to arrive by September 17th. And so between Jen, myself, and the mayor, hoping to coordinate some kind of blast, maybe, to the public. If it does, if we are in fact proceeding with that, then perhaps, you know, in your newsletter or in some form, to advise people that they can come and use that as an opportunity to pick up their complimentary pail. Otherwise, we can discuss other ways that we might. It just seems like that one is pretty seamless, and if it's, you know, if it's possible, that would be great. So that's it. Yeah, compost is, it's going, it's almost there. So, yeah, so that's that. And then just a quick update on Village Green Committee. We have a planting day. This fall planting day will be on Saturday, November 8th. And yes, the Village Green Committee is very hard at work planning all of this. We have current locations you have in front of you. We are currently coordinating. The way it has to happen is first, we have to get approval from these homeowners. That, some of these are trees that were taken out in the spring and to plant replacements. We have to have the approval of the homeowner. So once we get those, then we go out to 811, which is NYDig, and they come out and certify that the locations are indeed appropriate for planting and not interfering with any overhead wires or any other public works units. And so then we, then we, you know, set them up, get holes dug, et cetera, et cetera, and we have wonderful trees planted. So it's not too late to request one. Tomorrow is literally, you have the opportunity until tomorrow to request a deciduous tree, a beautiful tree to be planted in the Village right away. Please contact the clerk or myself by tomorrow, end of day tomorrow, Tuesday, the 9th. Our next Village Green, the Village Green Committee will meet this Sunday, September 14th, at 6:00 PM in the Village courtroom. It's a public meeting, all are welcome to attend. An agenda will be published in advance, and it's low-key commitment. They're really a great group, so I recommend anyone who is interested, come by, and let's beautify our Village. Thank you very much, that's me.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
I was just going to say that I'm very excited to see the ones going back into frontline, because I miss them a lot.
We'll see if, well, I know for one, nine, Ms. Stelling, she would like a replacement.
That's wonderful.
I don't know, two, we'll see, I don't know. Hopefully.
I mean, it's a nice effort, because it really changed the way the street feels.
It sure did. Yeah, we had, we have one person on nine, on South Broadway, who was like, oh, we need a tree, and we're hoping to have shade by next summer. Like.
They get a low share for you to how trees grow.
That's right, yeah, that can happen.
There you go. Depends on who's getting the shade. Exactly. And actually, just a question on the two or three near Glen Pond Drive. Are those in the solar, at the back of the solar field?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, which is something that you and I and Jake need to discuss.
Yeah, we need to chat about, yes. I just had a little note, wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, thank you.
Got it. Okay. Trustee Smith?
So I'm just going to talk about the water department reports. I'm not going to read this section, which basically repeats what Karen said. It is not that all along the Village hasn't been capturing all the water, it's that we switched which meter we're taking data from, and the chosen one does not. So the report shows roughly 3.3 million gallons of treated water for an average of just over 100,000 gallons per day. That is in stark contrast to the numbers I reported for last month, which was closer to 9 million for the total of the month. Three locations were sampled, August 28th. All three locations were negative for coliform and E. coli. The free chlorine residual amounts ranged from 0.08 milligrams per liter to 0.13 milligrams per liter. I deleted my standard reminder that there are 1,000 milligrams in a liter. Grants. So since our last meeting, I contributed to the writing of the WIA grant that we just already discussed. And I've been researching possible grants to fund improvements to the wetlands near the wastewater treatment plant. In my August report, I talked about the opportunity of a grant from Hudson River Valley Greenway. Initially, we were focused on the option of applying for a $20,000 Greenway Community Grant to fund a community visioning process. What is what?
Community visioning process.
So that was in last, my last report, but it's basically a plan for public participation and engagement in talking about what people's goals are for the Village Center and what kinds of improvements of infrastructure primarily they're interested in seeing.
And also, I would characterize it as a precursor to a comprehensive plan.
Nelson Pope and Voorhees, the Village's planning consultants, followed up with a proposal on how they might support and develop such a process. In reviewing their proposal and considering how the Village might best prepare for community engagement of this sort, and I'm not the only person who did this, but I can only report on what I did, I recognize that there are some intermediate steps that we need to make a visioning process more truly productive. So over the past four years, as part of preparation for a New York Forward grant process, the Village has heard most about the community's general interests surrounding the Village Center. Residents, business owners, and users of the Village Center talked about crosswalks, wider sidewalks, more spaces that looked nice, slower, quieter traffic, and so on. To take visioning to the next step, the Village needs more specific ideas and projects around which to focus community engagement. So basically, we don't need more general sense that people would like it to be more pleasant to walk in the Village, just as an example. But what we do not yet have are the professional reports and proposals needed to move that visioning forward. There is another option, which is a Greenway Compact Grant. They provide up to $50,000 for projects that support the Compact's values, which I read through last time, but I can review again if people want. So the single issue we have the most documented community interest in and support for has been improvements to the Village Center to increase pedestrian safety, reduce traffic speed, and add plantings within the central business area. So I think a better plan, based on where the Village is currently at, would be to use a Greenway Compact Grant to pay for the services of professionals in streetscaping, traffic flow, and sidewalk engineering. This is something that Karen and I discussed at my meeting with her in looking at different options for grant. What this would do is give folks something to look at, for one. It's all well and good for us to talk about bump outs or. look at, for one. It's all well and good for us to talk about bump outs or, you know, different ways of reconstructing sidewalks. But if you can't envision that, it's very hard to have an opinion about how specifically it would go. So, the timeline is exactly the same for a Greenway Compact versus a Greenway Community. We, the village did receive Greenway funding in the past, I think, 2009 slash 10.
Nine or 10, yeah.
Which means that we have already passed a resolution to accept the Greenway Compact values and would be eligible to do this.
And just to clarify, when is this grant due?
It is due at the end of October. It's due in October. I'm pretty sure the exact date, oh, that's on my computer. If it's not October 31st, it's October 21st, something in that, in that.
Late, late October.
Late October, yeah.
Got it. Great. So, we have, we still have some time to.
Yeah, we have some time to talk to some professionals and see what would be involved in.
Great.
Proposals from them.
Okay.
Oh, and I guess I should say, as the events liaison, to encourage everyone to come out for Hardscrabble Day, you'll see the posters and yard signs around now. It is Saturday, September 20th, starting at 10:00 AM in the village municipal lot, which gets transformed into a music venue space. And during the day is, early in the morning is more family, youth, kids, music in the morning, and then bands featuring teenagers in the afternoon. And the main headliners start at 6:00 or thereabouts and go roughly until 10:00 PM. It's gonna be pretty great, so.
And there's Car Scrabble this year.
And Car Scrabble, yes, which is a car show with a lot of fun, vintage and other.
And Historic Red Hook is also doing something at their thing as well, which is great.
Which is good. So, there's sort of like a.
There's gonna be a lot of stuff.
Pull you up there and then push you back.
Lots of action.
Yep.
All, all through.
I forgot to read the utilities bills report. So, for August 2025, there were $685.16 in utility bills issued. Penalties and finance charges issued, $1,044.81. Payments received, $27,864.24. So, that leaves an outstanding $18,235.64 owed to the village.
Great. Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
And trustee Macarini and I have not yet had a chance to meet and go over what, what assignments he would like to take on. So, he does not have any reports for tonight.
Can I ask one about the, about Hardscrabble, about the yard signs? How would one get one of those? Or do you have a, was there a print run of so many?
So, we, we are not responsible for those. We didn't print them. The organization printed them.
Okay.
And I believe that they are putting them up in major commercial thoroughfares.
Okay.
So, yeah. Posters are going out, being distributed to businesses in Tevely, Red Hook, Reinbeck. They're following the general distribution pattern that we had used in the past. So, yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
But they're always looking for volunteers, so.
Yes. If you wanna volunteer the day of, you will.
Or go on the website. There's a forum, so.
Yeah.
And it has.
Sign up.
Okay. That'd be good, good to know.
And there's the updated emails on there. And, yeah, so.
And that's hardscrabbleday.org?
Website itself, like on our, or because it's.
No, it's not. It's a separate, it's a separate website, actually. It's a separate website.
No, no, I know it's a separate website, but I just mean in terms of promo on our website.
Community events.
Yeah. But I just meant like, as, like a thing, because it's only the 20th.
Yeah, it's on the, the web, the main landing page.
Oh, okay.
If you go down to community events.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thanks. That's all. I was just trying to advocate for.
Beef it up, absolutely. Great. Okay. I don't have budget adjustments for tonight. I do need a motion to approve vouchers upon audit, after audit. Thank you, Amy. Second? Did I hear a second?
Uh, second.
Thank you, Fran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just to clarify, Mary Beth is gonna cut the checks on Wednesday. So, you have until Wednesday morning to review the vouchers. And then, the next is general business. Does anybody have any general business that they'd like to discuss?
I have this random thing that I was just thinking about, and it's garbage tags at Max are no longer sold.
Correct.
Is there any place in the village that we can get them on a Sunday? Does Taste Bud still?
Taste Bud sounds blue.
And they are open on a Sunday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I was just wondering if we should try to replace that.
That can be purchased.
Venue.
Yeah, venue with another place that is open on a Sunday, just because people prepare their garbage on a Sunday night. And sometimes they realize.
Speaking from personal experience, perhaps?
Yes. We have a lot of garbage that didn't go out yesterday.
We can talk to the hardware store.
Are they open on Sunday?
They are.
Baby Williams?
Yeah, that's where.
Express.
That's a good way to remember it. But I just was putting it out there that maybe we should consider another, I don't know if that's difficult to add another thing to.
It's for them to take on. It's not for us to offer them. They have to come in and buy tags, just like everybody else.
But if they may not know.
I mean, we cannot, we can, we can, we can approach them and say, "This is something that you could provide." I mean, there's the.
Should we say to the chamber that it's an option?
There you go.
Bingo.
Sure.
Good idea.
I mean, try and get somebody else to want to do it. That'd be great.
Because they're allowed to mark up on it if they want to. They can add a markup to make it worth their while. But just, I should've remembered that Taste Bud's was open, but by, I think by the time.
You could've also called your friend.
Email me or text me.
Who could've given you?
I would've, I've done it before.
I could spot you.
Who has tags?
Who's got a garbage tag?
As I've mentioned, it's my husband's department in our household.
Yep.
Division of Labor.
His, his responsibility.
His friends apparently draw our tags.
But, yeah, it was just, so maybe I'll reach out to the chamber and see whether or not.
That's a great idea.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, any other general business?
I did just, I just would like to bring up, I had sent Karen and Jen a resolution based on what we had discussed at the, at our previous workshop, where we were discussing the safety issues at Route 9. And thank you for your reply, Karen. I just, I would like to, just some protocol issues. I would like to know what exactly the protocol is for presenting a resolution, like.
Well, I think the first, the first thing that's important would be, would be, you know, Jen asks for all of our reports by Wednesday before, and so, it would be helpful to have it.
Would that be considered a report?
No, I'm just thinking in terms of timing. I mean, from my standpoint, in terms of, you know, I know that, that all the things that, you know, the resolution you're talking about is related to safety and traffic. It would be helpful to talk about that.
But we did at the workshop.
Understood. But I think some of the things that you're suggesting in there, for example, they do exist. There are signs. And the parking restrictions actually is part of, that's under our purview. So, we don't need to say to the state, you know, "Would you make this not, no parking?" That's up to us.
But we don't have no parking signs right up to the crosswalk currently.
Actually, if you look on, there's a no parking here to corner on Frayley to the right. There's, there, we.
But no, I just mean, not the corner, the actual crosswalk is what I mean. Not the, not the corner to Frayley, but like.
And, and so, the notion of where to put signs, where, where no parking is, that's actually, we can determine where those go. We just need to let DOT know that we are going, we just need to let them know. It is not.
But that's all that this.
For them, yeah. But, but what, what you're, as I read it quickly, was you were looking to send, um, send this resolution to the state, but some of those things.
No, this is just a resolution for the board in which, oh, by the way, not everyone has it.
Right. And so, here, so I guess, I guess, sort of, sort of elevating up, I think, just.
That it would be printed, because I, this is why I'm asking, if there's a protocol, I, I would just need to know that, you know, that this is where it needs to be. I didn't realize that it would be, there are things that come up in the meetings, like the Narcan machines, which we get, you know, through. So, I, I just would like to be clear on if I do have something I've worked on that I would like to bring to your attention, based on something we've discussed previously. What steps should I?
I would say I apologize. I did not realize, I, I frankly don't remember seeing it.
It's okay.
It came in after 5:00 today.
Oh, well, then I guess, then, no. I, I would say my protocol for meetings is to just, if you want something added to the meeting, kind of in the same schedule, if you will, of submitting your reports, have it, have it then, so we can have it on the agenda, so that I can link to it. Because all, everything that's presented here, if it's, unless it's an emergency thing, should be available for the public to review. That's why everything's linked. So, and that was done last week. So, if, if you'd like to put it on the next agenda, I'd be happy to receive it, and we can put it on the next agenda.
Yes, no problem. I just, it's just sort of like, just establishing precedent. And I'm very, I mean, I, I'm just using an example, like something that came up today, the Narcan machine. Like, we brought it up. It's not on the agenda. It's.
There's no resolution. It doesn't require a resolution. That's a different level.
Okay, that's, that's all.
Yeah, I would, I would say something formal like that should get on, because it's a piece of paper.
Okay, perfect.
That needs to be reviewed.
Okay.
I would say, like, if you were, like, if you were to update on, say, the, say, compost wasn't part of this, and you wanted to update, update everybody on, you know, that it's, you know, talking through it is absolutely general business. I think presenting a resolution to be voted on, I, my take is to have it on the agenda.
Perfect.
So, I can link the paper, so that we can all review the paper before the meeting. And so, yeah, I encourage you all, I encourage you all with, with meeting, with meeting materials, to send me anything you would like on the agenda, so that I can list it on there.
But I think the other thing is the question of whether or not village funds is used, right?
Village funds?
For Narcan, there's no village funds being used, but what you're talking about would.
No.
If we're going to.
Not, not as, not as, not as presented.
Not as presented. All right. Well, I didn't get to read it, so I don't know. But if we're adding signage, et cetera.
The irony being that I didn't send it to the full board, because previously.
I wouldn't have seen it if it arrived at 5:30.
Okay. Yeah. All right.
But things.
Yeah, no, and I would, of course, if it was on the agenda, I would disseminate it in the.
No problem. That's, yeah. Now, I know. That's all. I just needed information. I appreciate your patience with me.
Okay. Any, any other, any other general business? Tony?
I just wanted to follow up what Frances was talking about, because she had brought this up previously. And I think it involved the area around the library. Is that correct?
That crosswalk? Yep.
Now, we don't get, have to get DOT approval for that?
We do.
Well, it depends, it depends on what we're talking about. So, that.
Talking about opening up a couple of areas there where there'd be no parking, so that people can walk across the street.
Well, there is a crosswalk there.
Right.
So, at the crosswalk, you are not allowed to park.
At the crosswalk, but I think that the prior discussion was before and after the crosswalk.
Correct. And actually, if you look in our village code, there is no parking. And I, I looked it up, but I'm, it's not sticking in my brain. There is a window around it. If we don't have the proper signage around it, then we can, if we need to add a no parking sign, I looked, I did a brief drive-by. So, I can certainly drive by again and make sure we have the proper signage. What we, what we don't need to, we can install a sign. We just need to follow the proper process that DOT requires.
We don't need to ask for permission.
And the other is, I know one of the things that many of us have noticed is, there's a new crosswalk in Reinbeck, across from Rugi Subaru, that has an expanded painted area around the cross, on either side of the crosswalk.
That's what I was getting at, you know?
Well, and.
Do we need to just tell the highway people, whoever needs to go out there, with a couple of paintbrushes?
It's not quite that simple. But I did, I did follow up, because quite a few people, including myself, noticed that, that crosswalk. And I reached out to the, to the mayor of the village of Reinbeck. And I said, "Tell me about your crosswalk." And just to let you know, Rugi Subaru actually initiated, did all the paperwork, filled out all the forms, and paid for that crosswalk. So, the village actually didn't do it. It was Rugi's who did it.
But we already have the crosswalk, right?
We already have the crosswalk. And but, so I asked same. I said, "What about that?
Expanding.
What about the way it was painted?" And apparently, DOT painted it that way. And it wasn't requested that way, but that's the way they painted it. So, I am reaching out to our regional representative from DOT to ask about that, to say, "Is that something that you are now encouraging? And if we wanted to do that ourselves, what would that require?" So, that is, that, and I actually asked our DPW foreman, who has been in contact with him anyway. And he just, because of the emergency we have here, that just hasn't risen to the top of the list.
But I'd also like to just say that I think that if we are going to make a change around one crosswalk, that rather than do it piecemeal, right, for every single one, then it should be, if it's good enough for that crosswalk, then other crosswalks should also get that as well.
Well, the problem with that is, then you're talking six months down the line.
No, we're not. We're not. We're not.
Not, not necessarily. I think the first question is if DOT, if that's what they're now recommending, and if they tell us what the process is to, I mean, I think, I think for that, we just need, we just need a work permit. And so, we just need to clarify that. If we're gonna, and then, and if they say, "Oh, yes, that's what we're, that's what we're requesting," or suggesting.
It just makes more sense.
We can also do that, that paperwork for six instead of one, or whatever.
Especially if we're painting them.
Yes. We do have a paint, we do have a paint, a paint.
A line striper.
Line striper, that's the word.
We're not allowed to use it, though, unless the DOT approves whatever changes.
We need a permit.
That's what we need to confirm, is what is the, is there a specific form? Do we need to send you something? I mean, Jake does actually work with DOT all the time, because, because of the.
Well, no, I spoke to Jake this morning.
And so, yeah. So, that, that's, it just, yeah, we can't just decide today we want to do it. We do just have to ask, ask, ask to make sure that we're following the proper process. Okay.
I think maybe for everyone's comfort, we can follow Jen's, I think Jen's suggestion. I took it as Jen's suggestion and have this on the, on the agenda for, for our next workshop, which I believe is the 22nd. And then, everyone will have had time to review, if there are further. I, I mean, I, I spent a lot of time in this, and it's, it's, and also spoke with the, our regional traffic officer at, in, we're in region eight in Duchess County. And it's a very interesting man. But, yeah. So, as far as I can tell, unless there's extra information, this, it's not to establish all through the village, although I'm sure multiple areas in our village could benefit. This is literally the conversation that a resident and we all had a very riveting discussion last workshop about how this is a, a crosswalk that everyone has identified, everyone agrees is a problem. And this is just, all it is, is requesting DOT to enforce what is already the law. Nothing from us, just them. They then respond and say what it is that, that we're permitted to do. So, it's really not, I, I'm not, it's, it's just the board agreeing that DOT should be contacted. That's it.
So, and it just sounds like you already contacted them.
I did not contact them.
Who's the regional traffic?
Yeah, but that's someone on the phone. That's not a board, that's me getting information about what the process needs to be. That's not this. We have to, to take action as a board, we have to do something.
There are people who already know, is what I'm saying, within the.
I mean, I, I think it, I mean, you, you've put together a resolution. I think we can, we can review that. And, and we can have a discussion as, as, as a board.
The other thing that I would just add to this is that it can be helpful, if you have an idea, to talk to everyone individually. You can, you can have, you don't have to do a group email, which is not allowed. But you can talk to people individually, because sometimes people will have feedback that's relevant, that maybe would help you be even more prepared, you know?
Information about other things that are happening at the same time.
I agree. To, but to your point about the one-on-ones, and that is my, that, it's just a time issue. And that's always my hope. And this is reason, you know, meeting with Karen or meeting, there's just not, I, you know, there's just not the time. And we each have, you know, jobs and lives outside of our, our boardwork. It's not always feasible for me to go individually to speak to, as much as I would love it. But these are simple things that we can, like, kind of low-hanging fruit, if you will. If there's an easy letter that can go to someone in a department that gets something done, I feel, why not do it? It's not that we need to rewrite a whole village comprehensive plan, or we need to identify each of the, it's, I appreciate it, and I wish I had more time to do one-on-ones, but. but this is just a, a simple thing. We discussed it. Everyone seemed to be in agreement, and I wrote something that seemed in line with all the research and other resolutions I'd read from, from other village, New York village boards, so.
You can send individual emails, and it takes no time. It's the same amount that it would be to send it to Jen. You could send it to everybody individually, so we can review it. And you don't have, I'm just saying, then you can get feedback that may be helpful and may make the resolution more useful to everybody. That's.
But would you say, though, that the workshop is the, like, is the workshop an appropriate venue where we can all, like, speak then, or is there a reason that?
Because we're supposed to be informed before we bring things to the public, usually. So.
But I think, but I think, you know, you've already, you've, you've, you've written it, and, and I, and, you know, I think, I think you have the opportunity to share it, and, and I think now, you know, and I think it makes sense to share it now, because I think feedback can then, can then be, be shared prior to the workshop, if there's relevant feedback to be, to be, to be given.
Great. So, I'll, yeah, I'll have Jen do the Jen things for the agenda. Thank you.
Do you have enough copies? I would just say disseminate it now.
No, I don't think she's sent enough copies.
No, no, I have two.
But she sent you, she sent an email. You can just forward that.
I will put it out and put it in everybody's box.
Could you send it by email?
Sure.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, any other general business? I am now realizing that I do need to go into executive session. I apologize in advance. It is related to potential legal matter. There will not be any action following. But I would take a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
No, second.
Is it a potential legal matter that the village is thinking about?
Yes. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will.
Wait, were you all in? Who was the first and the second on that?
I was the first, she was the second. Thank you.
Thank you.
We actually, I need a motion.
Get out of executive.
I was going to say, I need a motion to go back into public session.
So moved.
Thank you, Amy. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now I will take a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. And Tony, seconds, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Done. No, he said, I, I heard, I heard noise.
Move!
He said, "Move!" Which is not usually what we say, but.
Oh, my goodness.